Calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, January 15th, 2020. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. I have a couple of announcements. North Main has contributed the displays in our room at the Ed Center tonight, so please, when the meeting is over— Not now! Don't rush up there. Please take a look at what they have done, have created. And if one of you has a black Lexus, your interior lights are on. Don, your chauffeur turned the interior lights off in your limo, so there's no worry there.
He's sleeping in the trunk, so...
He's sleeping, that's good. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Any questions and comments from interested citizens? Has anyone signed up? Any updates, Elsie, on questions or comments raised from interested citizens?
I do, I have an update. So when we were last here, last year, we had a young lady who got up and talked about her concerns about special education and, you know, made some mention to a couple of things that she felt that we didn't do appropriately. And so after that meeting, we called our attorneys, who handle just special education and legislation. And so there's a meeting set up with the Board of Education on February 26th, just really to talk about regulation and law and how the school operates. And just so that the Board of Education can be up to date about laws and regulations when it pertains to special education. So there is a follow-up to that.
Okay. The budget vote location you're going to mention later, or what?
I mean, now that you said it, I'll mention it now. Right?
No, let's keep it a secret. No, yeah, what?
So I think one of—that's a follow-up. One of the things that we've been talking about as we talk about security is looking for another venue to hold our budget vote. It was previously at Central Valley, and I've been talking to Christine Alth, and all of us really feel like we want to change that. So this year, we won't be changing it because we don't have an alternative location, because we believe that if we're going to use this side of town, which would be the Ed Center, we really couldn't house everyone. But we would like to look at another location—and I see Mr. Cologne, so that's maybe something you and I can talk about—on the other side of town. So maybe for 2021, that can be a conversation. But I just wanted to let everyone know that this year, we're not making a change, but we still continue to look at the opportunities to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 11th, 2019, regular Board of Education meeting?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to appoint the Board of Education's annual art purchase committee, which this year will include Mr. Don Beeler, Christopher Lorenzo, P. Lorenzo, and Mrs. Stacy McLeary?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve Mrs. Lisa Sooden?
Yes, and she's here in the audience.
Oh, as district clerk pro temp. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion or grave concerns? No? There being none? All those in favor?
She's sitting over there saying, "Oh, my goodness, I get myself into this."
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the revised calendar of Board of Education meetings for the 2019-2020 school year? Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Would you like to make a note that one is canceled, so everyone knows?
All those—
Should we be talking about the student?
The next one.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. What are the implications? What did we do?
Well, one of the things that we've been talking about is we typically have five budget presentations. And so the Board and the Cabinet have talked about how do we make these presentations in a—you know, not in five sessions, in three sessions, and make it more high-level. And so the decision was to do away with two presentations. And one of the presentations—one of the meetings was the end of this month—I think it was February—
January 29th?
January 29th.
And February 12th.
And February 12th. So those two meetings have been put away, and we will start the budget process in March. And I think it's because it's closer to when the governor puts out his budget, which makes more sense. Typically, what would happen is that everyone would get up and get their presentations, and then the governor would put out his budget, and then we'd have to sort of make some changes. Patrick, did you want to say something about that?
No, I was just going to say, so we would present the budget in a lot of detail, and there would always be a disclaimer, you know, "Subject to the passage of the state budget and state aid runs," you know, that sort of thing, and fund balance projections. So I think what we're trying to do is just sort of be a little more realistic and start the process when we have a fuller picture of how, you know, the whole thing's going to shake out, you know?
Yeah. And we still plan on doing the typical budget presentations, you know? We will go out to the various constituents in the community. We will do—and I see Carol sitting over there. Carol, will we be doing a—we'll be doing a—I have a loss of words today—the presentation where we normally do in the evening?
Crusader Chat.
Nope. Crusader Chat.
Crusader Chat, yes.
Will we still have our Crusader Chat, and the topic will be the budget?
Yes.
Yes, so we will still do that, and I really encourage the community to come and visit or, you know, watch us on Facebook, because you—you—there's really an opportunity for you to ask us questions and for us to be able to give you as much information as possible. So that's really the only change that we have.
So the next meeting will be Wednesday, February 26th?
Correct.
February 26th, yes.
And there is a working session for the Board at 5:00 about the special—about special ed?
Correct.
Awesome.
All right. And the revised calendar is or will be posted?
It'll be on—it'll be on the district website.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 student calendar?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Can I just say a couple of things about that?
Yes, you may.
So this year, it'll be a unique year because we will have—aside from starting before the 4th, we're going to start September 1st. School will start September—well, the first day of school for teachers will be September 1st, the first day of school for students will be September 2nd. Because Labor Day doesn't happen until the 7th, and that's the following week. So that's—that's unique. The other thing that I wanted to do was mimic the Bosie's calendar as much as we can, because our students attend Bosie's programs, and when we don't have a similar calendar, it becomes difficult—you know, some students have school and some students don't. So we're trying to mimic the calendar. So it'll be very, very similar to the Bosie's calendar with two exceptions. We will continue to have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. I believe that the community and the parents and the students appreciate that day. I always say it's the only real—it's our American holiday, so the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we will be off. And then on the 28th, many schools will close, we will be open, and that's May 28th. The other thing that's going to be new is that we will have a week off in February. This year, we will have February 15th through the 19th, the schools will be closed, which is—we haven't done that in years. So that's a little different. Again, it's very, very similar to the Bosie's—
A year from February.
A year from February. It's—it is very similar to the Bosie's calendar.
For those days—which days will be affected if we have too much snow?
Well, we—well, what we do is, on the calendar, what you approved today also talks about if we—if we exceed the allotted days for snow days, the first day we take back is April 5th. And then it goes on from there. Yeah.
Which is fine.
Anything else?
Good question, no.
First reading of policy manual update, extra classroom activity fund and petty cash. Chris?
So we looked at these two policies, extra classroom activity and the petty cash previously cash in within the school buildings. We looked at these policies with the state—the audit that we had got, preliminary reporting on the audit, so we looked into all the financials that have to do with money. We updated the one to adhere to what New York State provides, which is not that comprehensive. Our business office does a lot more in the—in comprehensive with deposits and what the rules are, so we wanted to make the policies reflect what the business office is doing so that it's easier for the business office to audit all these other things. The other thing that we added was a training program that we made part of the policy, so the person—the people in each school that are in charge of these funds are going to have to go through a training process so that they're doing everything the way we're asking them to do it procedurally and the way the business office likes it. We also added that the students that are involved in these extracurricular activities will also be trained, so that some of these students get to learn, you know, business proceedings, how to control the money, you know, writing expenses, offsetting, you know, deposits, whatnot, so that everyone on a whole will get a little bit more of knowledge on what, you know, the money in the schools and all these extracurricular activities enhance. So we're just—we're going to go through a couple more in the coming future, so you don't have to ask me later on my report. We're going to do booster clubs and other policy—and other money and financials. So this is the first reading. We just cleaned it up. Should be good.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We don't have a second reading of anything, so policies. Reports from Board of Education. Dawn, Visitation, Orange County School Boards Association.
So there has not been an Orange County School Boards Association meeting since last. Visitation, same. We actually are headed to Pine Tree tomorrow, and any of the minutes are available on the website for the visit. And we'll talk about the facilities.
Don, Facilities, is—
I'll let Patrick summarize it. There's kind of where a lot of our work is—we're cleaning up the punch list and everything's getting ready for the spring, for paving the track, but there's some other—there's some other items that we're also— Yes, so—so we haven't had a facilities committee meeting since December. We had planned to do one on the 15th, on today, and actually, we're postponing that because we're—we're waiting to get more information about the scope of an alternative school, the alternative high school. So we're still kind of gathering information about that. You know, in terms of the capital project, Don mentioned, we're—we're in the punch list phase, so it's mostly small items. There's one sort of major substantive item having to do with a retaining wall that was constructed on the upper field, the sort of the northeast corner. They began that. That was to extend the field, so there's proper clearance between the fence and the actual corner of the field, so that's underway. The other thing I wanted to mention in terms of facilities was, under Business Financial, there's a bid we'll be asking the Board to approve for renovations to the pool, so that's about $68,000. And what we're going to be doing is—it started out as—as just sort of a maintenance project—I mean, it is sort of a maintenance project, but it's a little bit more where we typically drain the pool and then we're going to paint it. So what we're going to do instead is drain the pool, do some work on the tiling, do some recaulking of the perimeter of the pool. We're going to then recoat it. It's going to be like kind of a process that takes away the layer that's there, you know, the painted layer, epoxy layer, and then recoat it, almost as though we're replastering the interior of the pool. And then they're going to do some work on the filter system, filtration system, you know, but we went through—we did—we did a bid for this because it exceeds the bid threshold, and we're going to do the work late June, early July. Shouldn't really have a big impact on anybody, but that's another facilities item that we're going to undertake soon, and we're going to ask the Board to approve tonight.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
We have a discussion related to correspondence received from the town of Monroe. Councilman Rick Cologne is—is here. Do you want to talk about this, or should Rick come up and chat?
Look, he can get up and chat.
Come up and tell us what's what. Or you're going to do it here?
Should I agree here? Or would you like—
You—you can stand there, so we can hear you probably because—
I don't think those microphones are on.
Yeah, they might not be on.
Even still, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for giving me the opportunity, and thank all of you for your service. This is truly, you know, a public service at its best when we have the public serving in this capacity. So thank you for all your time, and thank you for having me here. That being said, I had sent a letter of correspondence out. It was from—we have professional grant writers now that are writing the grants for the town of Monroe with some very good success so far. And one of the proposals that I had put through and we got approved for was charging stations in the town of Monroe as well as the village. The reason I sent a letter out to the board members is to elicit support, to show the support by the community for this grant. It is not necessary, but it speeds the approval process. So although electric cars may be a little bit in vogue now, but you do have electric vehicles out as well as hybrids, this is a small step to show that the community at large is behind the fact of trying to do what we can for the ecology. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of Rick or discussion about this?
So I can elaborate just a little bit more, because sometimes a lot of people aren't too familiar. These charging stations, of course, you know, people will pay for the amount of time that they're using it, but it also encourages the town to start getting, what is it, not only electric vehicles, but also the vehicles that are partly electric—
Yeah, the hybrid.
The hybrid cars as well. So we'll have that in the village, so when people go shopping, and also by Village Hall. And it also encourages both the village of Monroe and the town of Monroe to get either hybrid or electric vehicles on our next go-around as we progress.
Do you know where the—where the closest charging station is now?
My house. We don't have one.
No, close by, in the vicinity at all.
Chris's house. My house.
It is your house?
There you go, Chris. There's one, but for public use, I am not sure—
You're not sure, okay.
On that, so— The Cosmos, there's four charging stations in Cosmos.
Cosmos? Really? That's mid.
But we don't have any at Woodbury.
Price Comper and he's got a parking garage.
Okay.
So, I mean, and—and the cost to the—to the general public, basically, it's going to be a freebie, in a sense, because the only thing we have to pay for is the installation, which Highway Department can put in, and that can be offset the cost. So basically, this is a gift.
The only question I have or concern would be—I mean, I have electric cars, so I'm all for it, but I don't know about what about putting an electric charging station at the school? Does that mean somebody driving up the thruway, running out of power now, is just going to pull into our school parking lot and plug in? I just—we need to have a little more of—
Did he mention that? You didn't say you're doing it on the school campus.
It's not—it's not at the school board. It's going to be at town hall, at the new town hall, and it's going to be in the village.
I'm like, did I just say that?
However, if you were trying to put it at the school— Well, that may be our next one, so I mean, that would be a great idea, and I'm glad you support that, having an electric car.
It could be in the future, absolutely.
Never know, and I would be happy to have our grant writers support that if you board members so choose to have have it at the school. I mean, we're here at the town and the municipality.
I think it's more of a security issue, having a stranger come in to charge up at the school.
I—I don't think you're going to have a bright sign saying, "Charge here." I mean, that would—that would probably be more for the school vehicles and maybe a few employees, but it's something to look into down the down the line, should the Board, you know, choose to have something like this. I would be more than happy to support it and have our grant writers put it in for the school.
Well, we—we do things a little differently here in the district, so it would be something that would come from, A, the community, then it would go through the Cabinet, and it would go through the administrators, so there's a process. We would have to sit down and talk to our building principal.
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, so it's a—
I'm—I'm not trying to—I'm not trying to go around that. What I'm simply saying, should you go through your process and decide to have it, we'd be more than happy to help out wherever we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's appreciated.
Can I put it at my own job? Is that $20,000? Here's a guest cousin's truck.
So may I ask you a question? Are you looking for something from the Board as a whole or individually?
We have a letter that was on the Board—
It's a board play level, and you can all sign it collective or not, whatever you so choose, but as I said, this only shows community support, and it it expedites the approval.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming and explaining that. Report by student representative Maeve Harrington.
No.
Who has no report?
Because she's getting ready for her midterms.
Oh, midterm schmidterm.
Christian Bale Allen is here at the meeting before the midterms?
He did.
Yeah, he wasn't even—he wasn't even here.
She's here. So you're here, so there you go.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
There we go. Personnel. Matt?
Happy New Year, everybody, and I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Good. We have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions of Matthew? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Business and financial. Patrick?
John, I would also respectfully request the approval of the items under Business and Financial section of the agenda, which include two donations, $20 from York Cause LLC to North Main Elementary School, $1,000 from the Walmart Community Grant to Smith Clove Elementary School. We have four contracts for your approval, one dealing with essentially special education-related services and staff development in those areas, a contract for professional development for security staff, renewal of the town of Woodbury agreement for our full-time school resource officer, so that's on a calendar-year basis, so that's why we're doing this now, and approval for a hearing officer contract. We have the one bid that I mentioned for the pool refurbishment for $68,000. We have declaration of obsolete football equipment. There are a handful—I think it's about three—change orders related to the Smart Schools Bond Act Cabling Project. It's about $6,200. Essentially, it's just drops, additional drops in three of the buildings, three of the elementary schools. The approval of the budget calendar, and we talked about that already, a resolution to rescind an agreement that we had with Carbone Clinic, and one of the contracts we're approving—the essentially, Carbone Clinic was bought by a different entity or changed their name, so we're terminating that contract, and one of the the contracts we're approving is the new entity. It's called All Points Behavioral Analytics or something. Whoops. And let's see here. We—we have the resolution. We finally have our standard monthly financial reports for the month of November, and then a handful of budget transfers that exceed the the limit for us to—for me to approve and the superintendent to approve. We need a board board approval for that, so that's it.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by—oh, no. Recommendations—motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, items 17.1, 2.3, 4. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by Board and Central Office. Chris?
I don't have much to report. Happy New Year. Maeve, good luck on your midterms along with the rest of your students. Have a good evening. I don't know what to do with myself, it's only 6:00.
So congratulations to the FBI inductees. I attended the ceremony last week, and that was very awesome to welcome them in. Looking forward to the high school orientation tomorrow and the incoming freshman parents. And last night, I attended the hidden mischief that the high school PCA hosted with collaboration from ADAC, the Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Council of Orange County, and they set up a simulated teen bedroom and invited parents and guardians in to come and see if they can find the the hidden stuff that was in the room. So that was a really informative and well-attended night. And happy birthday to Prudence, my fellow Capricorn.
Yes. Happy 41st.
29.
I'm still working.
Whatever. You're—you're good, Suzanne.
I want to wish everyone a happy new year, and I want to wish all the students good luck on the upcoming midterm and Regents examinations.
Maeve?
I want to wish everybody a happy new year, and all week I've been working on—or I've been attending the eighth graders coming into the high school for the touring and all that, so they've been—they seem like a pretty good crowd.
And I just want to mention something, too. Maeve's going to take this on. You already know this. And I'm—I'm hazy on the law, but I believe it's something like 16 and 17-year-olds can preregister for for voting, so that when they turn 18, either it's automatic or it's it's simpler, whatever it is. Just encourage people out there in television land that—and all of our students—to realize that they have this opportunity, and it's important.
John, can I add to that, too, because it came up in conversation, and I know I was going to bring it up to Maeve, that are we giving anything for those kids that are seniors this year on how to take care of an absentee ballot? Because now, by the time you guys graduate this year, chances are you will be off at school next year. So I know that came up, and a bunch of kids that I was with were like, "Well, how do we even get the absentee ballot?" So something to think about also, to make certain that they're aware.
Claire can fill that out for them.
You know what we can do is, we can have Donna write something up, and then we usually send that information to our social studies teachers, and they can do that in social studies class to teach everybody what the rule—
Nice.
Can we put something?
Has just changed the rules on absentee applications, so—
Can we put something on our website?
It's on the Facebook.
It is?
That we can't do that?
Great.
We could make it a news story. Okay.
There are—there are new laws now that just came out about absentee applications, so we have to go through them first.
Right, and once we get—we've digested that new regulation, we will then—Donna will write something up, and then we'll share it with our social studies teachers. Because I think it's just—you said it's—students have—it's—it's not just that they can do this, they have a responsibility. And I think that—I say this probably at every meeting, and that's—I just don't think people understand that we all have a responsibility to vote. I don't say which way to go, but we all in this country have a responsibility to vote, and it's very concerning when we have a budget vote and only—I think—is it like 4%? 4% of the people in this community that have the ability to vote can vote, actually vote—I should rephrase that, actually vote. 4%. That's disappointing.
Yeah, that's about it.
And that should not be in this country. And that should not be in this country. The right, that we have the right to vote is something that other countries, people don't have that ability. So we really, and the young people that are sitting in here, you need to vote. So I think we're trying every which way to get you to understand, it is not just the ability to vote, you have a responsibility to vote. So get out there and vote. Sorry.
Well, you're right. Donna?
I just wanted, since we don't have another board meeting until February 26th, I just wanted to say that if anyone's interested in running for the Board of Education and has any questions, please let me know or contact me, and also packets will be available the first week in March.
Thank you. Thank you. Borga?
Welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year. Last night, I attended Hidden Mischief event at the high school, high school PTA, Mr. Ober, Mr. Casti and his team did a great job. Also, ADAC was there for a presentation, and it was a very learning experience to see that sometimes the drug could be hidden, you know, plain sight in a, in a kid bedroom. So thank you for organizing the high school PTA.
Eric?
Quick congratulations to everybody who was appointed this evening, particularly the district clerk pro temp. Congratulations.
Just in case you're wondering, Lisa is Eric's secretary.
Thank you for that.
She's not going too far down the hallway, technically. Not too far.
She'll still be able to hear you.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm proud of that.
It's not far enough.
Well, a little bit.
So I, I have three concerts logged so far, and a couple more to go. Kaleoscope and Prism concerts are coming up in a few weeks, which if you have not been, they are a must-go. You should definitely check those out. I also attended the FBLA induction last week. Congratulations to all the new inductees, and good luck to everybody next week who are taking midterms and Regents exams.
Patrick?
Happy New Year, everyone. Have a nice evening.
You are-
Matt?
I just want to point out and say congratulations to those people whose retirements you just accepted. You have people who have been here, some of them in the district for over 35 years, and they will, they've made a tremendous impact on many of our students and staff and parents. So congratulations to them. They have some good things coming to them. It's wonderful. So have a nice night.
Lorraine?
Same. Well wishes to the retirees. Congratulations to the appointees, and good luck on the midterms. And happy new year, everyone.
Stacy?
Same. Happy New Year and good luck.
Anthony?
Happy New Year to everyone. I also attended the Hidden Mischief event last night, and I did exactly what they said I shouldn't do. I went home and immediately searched for things. Luckily, I found nothing, but the hunt is still on. Have a good evening.
Dan?
Have a good night.
Kelsey?
So I think I'm going to be like Eric today, because I have a whole bunch of things that I want to say. First of all, happy birthday to Prudence, happy belated birthday to Dawn, and to Dan. I also attended the FBLA induction ceremony, wonderful ceremony. It's great to see our kids and see them moving and shaking and all the good things that they're doing. I also had an opportunity to, an opportunity today to visit with future teachers. We offer a course, a course in our high school that allows students who are thinking about going into education, is it college-bearing?
Yes, SUNY.
It's a college-bearing course, so I highly recommend it to everyone to take the course. And we had an opportunity to speak with those students today, and it's just amazing to see the young talent that we have, and, you know, the possibilities of these young people going into education. So I want to just make mention of them and thank Michelle Buller, who's an amazing and awesome teacher. The other thing I do want to talk about or just mention is that we, our strategic plan is still strong and, and, and moving forward. And one of the committees, one of the task force is our communication task force. And one of the things that they're doing, or that they recently did, is they administered a survey to our 5th through 12th graders to ask them about, how are we doing with transition? When a student is going from 5th grade to 6th grade, when a student is going from 8th grade to 9th grade. And they're just in, in, in the process of kind of looking through that data, because I think communication is very important for all of us, and how we do and what we do, and getting feedback from our community. The other thing that we plan on doing is, we'll be administering the survey we administered two years ago. It's part of our strategic plan. We, we took a look at how we did two years ago, and now we're going to administer it again and see where, if we made any improvements and where we need to continue to work. That is going to open January 17th. Everyone will get a letter, and it will close February 19th. We took a look at the questions that we asked in that survey, because we thought that it really was about communication to our families. It's not. So I believe that in May, we're going to, or you guys are, because Dawn is part of that, that task force, you're going to look at creating another survey to talk specifically about how we communicate with our, our constituents, what kind of a job we're doing, what can we do better, and just, again, be more specific about communication. February 9th, what did I say? 19th, thank you. February 9th. Didn't want to give an extra 10 days, just in case. There's a newsletter that's going out. There's three things that I'm going to be talking about, that I'm going to be hoping that you pay very close attention. State testing. A lot of our families are opting out. I want to encourage you to allow your child to take this test. We had a high school student, I think it was a year ago, two years ago, who got up and said, "It's probably not a good idea to not allow your kids to take a state test." And then when they get to high school, they're, they're hit with really critical Regents exams. So we think the information is pertinent. I really want to encourage parents to think about allowing their children to take the test. It's good for the district. It gives us data. It's not the only data we look like, look at. So that's one thing. Attendance. If you're a parent in the community and you've received letters from the building principals about your child's attendance, coming to school is critical. And I think that I want to, I really want parents to understand that when we call you, it's not because we want to punish you, it's because we want to make sure that your child comes to school. The only way that they can learn is if they're sitting in the classroom. And then lastly is the 2020 census. It is coming along this year, and it is not going to be on paper. It is really important for the community to fill out, actually not fill out, respond either via phone or on an email. Respond to the census, because federal dollars come to the district as a result of that census. If you do not fill it out or do not respond, the district can lose money. So it's really, really important. I encourage everyone to participate in the census. And lastly, if I'm not mistaken, I want to congratulate Gina, who went from interim to permanent, and I want to give her, she is doing an excellent job, and I just want to thank her. She's a great addition to the middle school, and, see, I, I really did go. This year, I'm going to talk more.
I never go that long.
You're not the superintendent? Maeve and everyone, good luck.
Thank you.
Tests are so much fun. Happy New Year, happy birthday to Prudence Thurston, or Stalwart. And that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss two student disciplinary matters? Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Meeting is adjourned.